You got her, okay. Let's come to order. I'd like to welcome each one of you here this afternoon. This is a workshop, a local restore committee. Mr. Mike Flint, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
First off, I'd like to thank the commissioners. I know this is a busy season with the budget in preparation and all the other demands on your time, so I do appreciate you allowing us to do a workshop here to address a concern that came up in a local restore act committee meeting. What I'm going to do, what we're going to do today is share some information. I think some of it is new information. We know that the basics have been covered in front of you plenty of times before. And then we're going to discuss the new Department of Treasury regulations for the Restore Act, specifically for the direct component, the pot number one component. And then I'm going to make a request at the, based on a vote of our committee, that you consider hiring professional help to work with the Restore Act, okay? And any questions, please interrupt either Dr. Lewis or myself. And we're going to start with a presentation by Dr. Rod Lewis, who is the director of the Haas Center. He's well-educated, as you might guess, Alabama and FSU for his doctorate. He's spent some time in the private sector, and now he is the director for the Haas Center. And, Dr. Lewis?
Thank you, sir. This was a presentation that I did for the Restore Committee, and thank you for having me today. And I'm going to try to walk through some of this, because I'm sure some of it you've seen before and some of it you may not have. But feel free, at any point, to engage, to engage me, interrupt me, ask questions, whatever we need to do to move the process along. But thank you for having me today. Wrong way, sorry about that. I'll figure out how to use this thing before the presentation's over. This, again, is a presentation that we did. I'm just going to talk briefly about the regional economy and then update on regional approaches to restore planning, because this is going on throughout Northwest Florida right now. And we're engaged in a couple of, on the economic side, in a couple of counties. And there's some very interesting things that are going on out there that you might want to be aware of. So I'll talk a little bit about funding streams, key issues, potential pitfalls. And then I think one of the things that I enjoy saying, as we say, especially in the South, this time and one more will make twice that we've all done this. So this really is something that's different from what you normally engage in on a day-to-day basis. And so there's a broad range of skill sets that I think that most of us will have to apply to get this right. This is the Walton County economy as it benchmarks against the state. And it's no secret that the, this doesn't work, it's no secret that that doesn't work either. But leisure and hospitality, which is about midway there, is the core baseline of your economy. And most of the economy across Walton County is closely tied to that, particularly construction, and then in some level, professional and business services. But you see, you far outrank the state in terms of percentage of leisure and hospitality. And so what I think this means for you guys, as you look at this and you look at ways to grow, diversification is something that's going to be critical in the way that you leverage these monies to diversify these funds. Because you see with this bright purple circle there that sticks out above everything else, the biggest one, that's your leisure and hospitality industry, and that's direct jobs only. So forecast to grow strongly, and I think Walton County is forecast to be one of the strongest growing counties in Northwest Florida. And that's a function of the fact that, on some level, you're smaller, and then also a function of the fact that there's a lot of room to grow over here. But you'll see that it's below average in earnings, and you guys have some of the lower earnings rates across Northwest Florida as well. So that's kind of where you stand economically. If I'm moving too fast, just let me know. And you see this right here, government is your highest paying, essentially your highest earnings category. And most of these folks are folks that live in Walton County but commute onto the base in Eglin. And so that's where you get a lot of your high earnings. And then leisure and hospitality is very low comparatively, but it's where the bulk of your jobs are. So there's plenty of room for an economy in, across Northwest Florida that, you know, we know a couple of tricks. Ours is a two-trick pony. It's government, which is national security and defense, and then it's leisure and hospitality, and it's tourism. So there's certainly room for that to change over time. If you look at bed tax, you guys have done extremely well. You've promoted effectively and efficiently, and you're seeing consistent growth in the wake of the oil spill. And so that is certainly a good thing. It's certainly boosted the economic recovery. But if you look at where you have recovered, it's mostly in the tourism side of it and nowhere else that you've seen the bulk of the job growth. So, again, positive news, but something to be concerned about as you look at where you're headed. I love this chart, because it shows, I think, at least from our perspective, the complexity of the process. And I think this is what the Restore Committee was looking at. And if you look at where Walton County is, you're that little bitty blue line down there that says 13.712%. And so you're looking at allocating resources and hoping to leverage all of these other resources, again, right? Because you have a play in basically every pot. You have a play in Triumph Gulf Coast, you have a play in Pot One, Pot Two, Pot Three. And so the question is, how do you leverage all of these resources? And who decides how you leverage these resources for the optimal outcome? Because in places where other monies can be spent, it certainly makes sense to spend someone else's money before you spend your own, right? Because you have total control over only one segment. But if you can leverage every other segment to spend first, then that gives you much more flexibility in the way that you leverage your resources. And I think this just shows, as your Restore Committee is beginning to come to grips with, that there is a lot of complexity in the process. So this is just, you know, the range, potentially, of the funding that's going to flow through. I'm sure you've seen this before, between about 26 million, if there's due diligence, and about 101 million if there's gross negligence. So that is a pretty broad range. It's not, there's 75 or so million dollars in play between those two numbers. And so from a planning perspective, that means that, as you think this through and as you look towards the future and what you're going to be planning for, it's, the depth and breadth on the one side at 101 million is much greater than the depth and breadth on the other side. Pot One fundable projects, yes, sir. I'm sure that you're well aware of this.
The 10 items you got listed there, where do they come from?
This comes straight out of the Restore Act. So these are the places where you can spend your cash. And this was reaffirmed in the Treasury guidelines that came out today. And if you look, there's everything from restoration, mitigation, implementation, workforce development, job creation, infrastructure projects, coastal flood protection, planning assistance, which is, you know, hiring consultants. So that is part and parcel of what's funded there, and then administrative costs. And I think that's important for you guys to know. And I don't know if you've heard this, but we're encouraging every county that we work with closely document all of your expenditures as you walk through this process, because there is a good chance that you will get every nickel of that back on the internal administrative side, which is where that 3% of the final funds is headed. So it's, so the government is imposing this bureaucracy as it laid out in the Treasury guidelines upon you, but they're giving you some flexibility out of this funding stream to compensate you for that. And then planning assistance, of course, is reimbursable as well. And I think that will be much more evident in the counties across the region that comes, that there's some room for that to boost. So this just lays out the overlap in funding across the various mechanisms. So you have, for example, restoration and protection can be supported by NERDA and if with Pot One, Pot Two, Pot Three. And so this drives back, the place where you have control, where the county commission has total control, is Pot One. If you have a restoration and protection item up that you need to see funded, why not compete for Pot Two and Pot Three funds before you decide to spend the funds that you have total control over? So, and there are plenty of places down, for example, Pot One and Pot Three overlap completely. So you have a play in Pot Three before you necessarily need to spend Pot One. And I think as you lay out your plan, you need to be cognizant of that. And that's certainly something that we talked to your committee about extensively. And then you also have Triumph Gulf Coast on the backside, which I think is going to be one of the most innovative things that we ski come out of this. And it will focus on workforce development, job creation, infrastructure, economic and ecological, and then economic and community resilience. And those are the three places there where you can leverage those funds down the road. And so this is kind of thoughts from across the region and how people are benchmarking and what they're looking at. And to some extent, you guys are doing some of these and not others, but we want to toss this out there as ideas. Leverage all funding streams, I can't stress that enough. It's not, don't have, don't put on your blinders and focus solely on Pot One, because there's other money out there that you need to be looking at for these projects. On the economic side, diversification is important, economic impact of these projects, how do you measure them? Long-term costs. So if you decide to fund a project that's only a million bucks upfront, but it's going to cost you a million bucks a year for 40 years to sustain it, you know, that may change the way that you look at that investment from a Pot One perspective. And so that's something that you need to be aware of and that you need to measure overturn over time. Return on investment, that's really the only way to determine how these funds are best spent, because, you know, you can have someone come in and ask for a million bucks, and they can conserve, you know, 1,000 acres. And someone comes in and says, I need a million bucks to conserve 5,000 acres. And if you just look at, you know, on the one side of it and you don't match one against the other, you won't necessarily know what the return on investment there is. And so that's one that I always encourage folks to look at. I think it's also going to be important for you to develop consistent formulae for ranking projects on these key dimensions, whatever you choose, because there is always the chance that you can have a challenge to a decision that you've made on the backside. And if you have a very scientific and formulaic approach in the beginning, where everyone knows that there's a level playing field and how these projects are going to be specifically graded, and the criteria upon which they're going to be ranked, I think you set yourself up much better on the backside for not having those sorts of challenges, because it just makes a lot of sense, because there's nothing that says that this can't come back to bite you in court someday. So that's something that we, you know, we encourage clear definitive measures on each of these various dimensions, however you choose to measure them, that you're clear upfront, that you're clear to the public, and that everyone buys in before you walk down the path, so that it doesn't come back to get you on the backside. Ambitious agenda versus conservative agenda, really you need to be thinking about two plans of action, depending upon where the money goes and where the findings come down. So depending upon whether you get 25 or so million or whether you get 100 or so million, because that really makes a difference on how this flows. Regional timing concerns, when does the money flow? We know that you will be getting some money upfront, roughly, I think, at 6 million, based on the initial settlement, and then the rest of it will flow after that. We don't yet know when that money will come. How to pay it for upfront costs? Every county's concerned about this, because you don't want this coming out of your budget. And the good news is, is that it really shouldn't. It should not come out of your budget. You have 3% allowable on the administrative side to support your staff in-house. And then if you decide to go for outside planning, as he suggested, you certainly can pay for planning costs out of that as well. So there's, not out of the 3%, but out of the backside. Auditing and accountability, I think, as the feds suggested this morning, there's going to be a pretty long tail on this over time. So the framework that you implement, and in terms of auditing and accountability rules, it's not going to end when you disperse that last dollar, right? There's going to be monitoring over time that you're setting yourself up for. So you certainly need to be cognizant of that and preparing an implementation plan for Treasury. The plan that you submit will need to be detailed. Each project will have to have measurable goals and deliverables. It will have to be submitted to Treasury for approval. You'll have to meet some environmental benchmarks for those environmental projects that you lay out. Certainly you'll have to have technical expertise to be able to present that sort of plan to the Treasury in an acceptable manner. That was clear from the guidelines this morning, and, or as I read them again this morning. And it's also clear that there's more to come on that front, because they say in several places in the 60 or so-page document that they submitted, that in this grant process, and it's going to essentially be a federal grant process for you guys and for Walton County, you will be treated essentially like a state. You are a separate contracting entity with the federal government in receipt of funds in a grants-type process. And so that's going to define the way that your auditing and accountability rules work will look much like a federal grants process, at least I think, coming down the pipe. So that's, so unlike other states that did not choose to set this up the way that Florida did, where the state takes that burden on them, for the eight disproportionately affected counties in particular, all of that burden is going to come to you guys on the auditing and accountability side. And I think that's becoming more clear in the guidelines. And then just last, don't forget that there are eight other counties in Northwest Florida, there are counties in Alabama that are doing this, and to the extent that you guys can leverage funds across county lines, and leverage funds for regional projects, and leverage those projects against other pots of money, definitely do it. I mean, don't just think about Walton County, because there could be projects that you can cooperate with on counties to the east and the west, that give you a much bigger bang for the buck with a much smaller investment, if you go regionally and go cooperatively. So that was a run-through. He asked me to take about 10 or so minutes to do that. I wanted to give you some of our ideas. And I'll take any questions that you guys might have.
Any questions?
I think one of the things that we talked about in that council meeting that we were, we were in, and y'all, you know, kind of tell us about what some other counties are doing, and how they're setting things up, and if they're hiring consultants, you know, what type of firms are they hiring? Is there social services out there that everybody's using? How do you all come into play in that?
There have been two counties in the four-county region that have gone out thus far for consulting firms. And one is Santa Rosa County, and the other is Okaloosa County. And so we are partners on both of those projects, and they were roughly the same size and magnitude. There wasn't a standard scope of services or standard agreement. It was sort of tailored over time to the particular needs of the county. And so that is the way that they're going. Escanbee County has not, they decided that they would go it alone. They are now revisiting that decision. And I expect to see something come out from Escanbee County very soon, because as their Restore Committee is walking through this, they're beginning to think, well, you know, this is a little more complex than we initially thought it was going to be. And then the next step was, this is a heck of a lot more complex than we initially thought it was going to be. And so therefore, you know, we really need somebody with some experience. And the teams that have to approach this have to be multidisciplinary by nature. So you really need someone with a firm grasp on economics, and that's typically where we step in. And then you need someone with a firm grasp on the environmental and engineering side. And so those two pieces have to flow together. And then you need someone with strong experience, I think, with the federal grants process. And that is something that, you know, we certainly have in our house at the university, and then a lot of large firms have that in-house as well. But that's kind of the overarching goal. And so that's where it stands. But I expect, you know, all four, and I don't, Bay County is a little far to drive, so I mean, that would not be, I don't know as much about the process that they're doing down there, because I haven't been as engaged, but that's my core suspicion, yeah.
And I guess, what kind of services are these consultants providing? Are they, what kind of services are they, what are they doing for these counties?
The first place that we have started in both counties is walking through the ranking process. And so how do you determine which projects rise to the top, and how do you measure these various dimensions? And going forward with the firm process for how that works? Because, you know, you say, well, I want the economic impact of this project to count for 20% of its total score. That is great. It's great for me to know that. How do you measure that, right? How do you measure that consistently across every project? Is it totally about jobs? Is it about the impact on GDP? Is it about output? Is it about sales? Is it core return on investment? So per dollar invested, how many dollars? Is it fiscal impacts? Is it some combination of all those? And then how do you, how do you apply that exact same metric to each project? And so that is where it all stands right now. And then the next stage will be to open an application process that is consistent for every project that comes in and have those flow in.
Yeah, that was my next question. The applications, have they, have they come up with an application format? And what does it ask? Are they still working?
It is still in process, and it's interesting, Santa Rosa County opened up and said, give us some core descriptions of what everyone's thinking in the community. And then they've decided that to backtrack, I wouldn't say backtrack, but to step back and say to everyone who wants to propose, once these criteria are set, you're going to have to reapply. And so they took the ideas that came in first, and they said, well, does this apply to Pot Two? Does this apply to Pot Three? Can we get you in that stream? Okaloosa County has decided that they're going to set their ranking criteria first, and then they'll open everything up to the general public to apply. So it's just a, it's a different, you know, and there's nothing that the feds have said or anyone has said that you have to do it this way. And there's certainly nothing in the guidelines yet that say that either. But I think defensibility is the key.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, I think that's all I have. I may have one other question, but.
All right. The draft document did come out, I believe, last Thursday, Friday, and, you know, we have 60 days, the counties do, everybody has. And anybody here, I go to West Palm next, I meet again next Wednesday. So if y'all've got comments you want me to take to the consortium, I appreciate if you get them to me. So, because I'll be leaving here on Tuesday and the meeting's on Wednesday.
And I definitely.
But they're draft at this point, you know.
Yeah, and I definitely think it's a good idea for every, I mean, there, at least to me, there were some areas where I think that the draft would benefit for some clarification of terms and expectations and things like that, so, you know.
There's Gilson. I know what my question was. How are these other people paying for the consultants upfront? Are they taking it out of their budget and keeping track of it to get paid back? So they are having to come out of pocket upfront costs.
Right. And so they're betting, they're coming out upfront, they're betting that the initial settlement from, there was the $1 billion settlement that was recently released, they're betting that those funds will flow in time to pick it up quickly. So that's the initial thing. But there's nothing, now the, to cut with the other side of the knife, that there's nothing that says that what you've expended at that point, they'll reimburse.
That's right. We still don't know that, whether or not they actually are going to reimburse it.
Right.
We're contemplating that.
There is no.
Yes, but there's, and the feds have not.
They haven't said anything.
What would be the typical cost for something like that?
Both counties that have gone out so far have come in in the 140 range, I think.
140K.
Mm-hmm. And it's for 12 to 18 months, so it's for the, for, you know, the engagement of the process.
Any other questions? Any public comment?
Well, hi, Stephen Webster.
Come to the podium, sir.
Hi, I'm Stephen Webster with MW Consulting. We've been working with Monroe County for the past year on these issues, and we've looked at the rules, too. And I think that was an excellent summary that you just heard. There are a couple of points I want to amplify for it. My understanding from reading the rules is that no costs are reimbursable prior to approval of a plan. Now, once a plan is approved, it is unclear, but seems to be that costs that were already paid will not be reimbursable. So conceivably, a consultant from hired today will be, the cost will be borne by the county or whomever hires them until a plan is approved, and then from that point forward, those costs can be reimbursed. That's going to be a major issue discussed at the consortium next week, and one that I know that other counties, I was talking with Waculla this morning about that, they were at a meeting I was at, they see that as a major issue in how to move forward. A second one that they raised, and again, this was touched on, was the auditing requirements that the Treasury is going to have. Now Treasury assesses for Pot One, your money, they really don't want a monkey with what you select. But once they award it, they will absolutely fine-tooth comb you with the higher sets of auditing standards that the federal government has adopted the past couple of years. If you're like other counties, you've probably seen that interfere with road building, bikes and paths, and all sorts of grants that you're looking at from the feds now. That's an issue, too, that other counties will be commenting on. A third and related issue to that is that the consortium is not managed by the Treasury so much as it will be managed by the federal council. The rules will be implemented by the council that oversees the state expenditure plan, that's what Pot Three, I want to say. That money is really going to be difficult to access in a short period of time. The reason being, the state, it specifically says in the council rules, that the consortium cannot be reimbursed for those costs for planning before they write their plan. As the Commissioner Commander knows, they're looking at a six-figure cost to develop that plan at the consortium level. They don't know how they're going to do it. They did ask, and I believe you can verify this, the governor's office, perhaps for some legislative assistance, and they were turned down flat, but I think that will be rediscussed again. So the consortium plan, looking for money from it, could be a long time out. Additionally, the council will write its own regulations, but they have a higher threshold for plan approval than either the state plan or the county plans. So if you're looking to get things done quickly, while it is good to use other people's money, the money that you have will be the first money that's available. Anyway, I just thought you'd benefit from a little additional insight. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
He's right on. There's one other thing, I don't know whether you're all aware or not. We have, you know, we first started working with Okaloosa County on watershed projects. That's kind of like spread, and now we're working with Bay County, even Washington and Holmes, even though they're not on the Gulf, they're in the watershed. And has, actually, the eight counties now together are working, trying to work on a watershed plan together, because we think that will give us strength for Pot Three, if we all look at the watershed, which is, you know, and try to solve the problems of the watershed together, as combined counties, united counties. We think we have a better chance of getting some of that council money. And we're all doing it without, without spending any money right now. We're trying to use as many resources as we can that we don't have.
Is there one person that's kind of pulling that all together?
There are a number of people, Darryl Boudreau with the Nature Conservancy, and I can't think of the lady's name, I never can, that's with him. Billy McKee from our department is working with them.
But they don't, they haven't hired a staff person?
No, I haven't hired, no.
Okay.
Because there, again, we don't know we can get any money back, you know? It's pretty clear, we're not going to get anything we spend up until this point, we are, I mean, we're not going, excuse me, being reimbursed. So that's the tough part.
Anyone else?
I just want to understand, there's a, there's debate about that. I mean, there's something to decide, you know, keep track of it, because there is a distinct opportunity to make.
And I think we should keep track of it, just in case.
Oh, yeah.
You know? And I don't know, there's still some part of me that says, in the end, they may pull it to the federal government, and I don't know, there's others, it's something itching back here that says, you know, there's. back here that says, you know, there's money out there and the federal government, they won't, their hands on it, you know? Our president doesn't run again, he's turned out, so.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Pat Blackshear, Blackshear Planning. And I would just like to emphasize, as the Speaker said, it's a, I've been tracking this for a couple of different clients and it's a very complicated program. And I would encourage the board to hire someone who has in-depth knowledge of how to leverage the different programs. I've really been impressed with what I've seen the HOSS Center setting up for Okaloosa County and Santa Rosa County. And I think that you're going to really need that kind of knowledge and expertise. Or, you know, if you don't go in that direction, open it up for, you know, outside source. But I think time is of the essence and I think you've got a really good committee put together. And of course, now that Mr. Jones has moved up, he's not coordinating the project anymore. But you've got a great group put together and I'm excited about maybe some funds will come to this county for joint projects like the Chautauqua Bay needs more work. That would be a joint project like Commissioner Commander spoke of. And I still feel that there's so many needs for our coastal loon lakes and that is more a Walton County focus. So I just encourage you to hire somebody who can really take this ball and run with it and leverage these dollars. Because if you look at these other pots, there's so much more that can be done and some of them are really on a fast track if you want to get that leverage ability of the other pots of funds. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tim Pauls, I'm on the Restore Committee and I've made every meeting. I just wanted to express to you the, how complex the whole process is from what I've seen in the time I've been involved with it, and how important it is that you would really consider having an expert who's living and breathing and eating this stuff and way you have to work through the whole charts. This is an exceptional opportunity for Walton County to see things get done that perhaps will never happen again in all of our lifetimes. So I really think that it's one of those things that's worth even spending some money that you may not get reimbursed in the 3%. But being able to try to be right up there and playing with all of the rest of the counties to get Walton County's share. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, thank you for listening to the presentation this afternoon and thanks for the comments from the group. I just wanted to share briefly with you how we got to this point. Our committee has been meeting. We've got a subcommittee looking at our application process that has to be pending until we get the Department of Treasury application process that we can mesh with. And at our last regular meeting, we started looking at how are we going to actually rack and stack all of these applications that we anticipate? And we looked at the method that the watershed group has come up with where they take certain criteria and give them weighted values. We looked at that method at the meeting and these guys are smarter than me, they came up with some ideas that were very useful. And what I had proposed originally was just too simple to actually work. So as a result of our looking at what we are being asked to do and the complexity of it, we decided that perhaps we need some help. You know, the, as has been pointed out, the process is unique and the upfront is where you're going to make it or break it. It is unfortunate that the funding issue is unclear at this time, but nonetheless, if you don't want to waste the money in between here and then going off in different directions and having to be redirected, if you want to do it right the first time, we really do need some help. And one of our members made the motion that we ask you to consider hiring a consultant, ask you to consider issuing a request for proposal for helping our Restore Act Committee and the county's effort. And that's where we are today. And if you have any questions, I'd be delighted to answer them if I can.
Any questions? We certainly appreciate the job the committee has done and the work's been put in it and we appreciate the work y'all done.
Well, Mr. Chairman, last night, Mr. Jones was tasked with doing some relooking at the budget process. And I would ask that during the next two weeks while he's doing that relook, to see if this can be accommodated in any fashion without making a specific commitment to you today. But at least with all of the things that you're going to have to look at, see if that's doable in the near term.
And that'll give me time to come back from West Palm and come back with the information I get back from there as well.
You know, sitting in on most of those meetings, I agree, you're going to need somebody who can run at the state level with, you know, the players, run at the local level. I mean, you know, so, and a lot of these engineering firms have kind of put themselves in the mix as well. So, you know, I think it's a good idea.
You may or may not know, with regards to Santa Rosa and Okaloosa County, are they using general fund monies or TDC monies?
I'm pretty sure they're general fund. I've not heard of any TDC funding being used.
It's general fund?
General fund, right.
Is there an opportunity because of the impact that created this process on the beaches, which are essentially under the TDC umbrella, to perhaps capitalize using some TDC monies or all TDC monies to help fund this expertise?
TDC monies are typically very restricted. And so I would, I certainly want to hear from the county attorney on that one before I would comment.
I had a feeling you were going to say that.
My core, my bet, my core bet is no, but.
And we're sensitive to that. And we're aware there's a lot of, there's some flexibilities in there. And the reason I ask is that this whole thing really started with BP oil spill that impacted tourism, impacted our beaches. And as you saw from the charts you put up, our biggest industry is the leisure and tourism industry. And whether it requires a legislative finding or not, but Mr. Davis and maybe you can get with the TDC attorney and talk to see if there's an opportunity there so that as we look at what's available over the next two weeks, that we can come to a determination.
Who is the chairman of the TDC board? I forgot.
You know, I know when we were looking, Bill, at the bike paths and whether or not we could, you know, that is a direct, we can correlate the tourist use the bike path. I, you know, I would love to use TDC money, God only knows. But, you know, we're talking about the watershed, we're talking about cleaning up the bay, we're talking about economic things, which I don't think you can correlate necessarily to tourists.
Many, but many of the things that are on the fundable projects fall within the parameters of where TDC operates. And all I'm asking for is just an opportunity to possibly come up with a, an available funding source that, instead of the general fund, which is struggling right now, that has the capability of perhaps funding some or.
Commissioner, we had a Florida Association of County Attorneys conference call, I think it was last week, and this very issue came up. And there's going to be a number of requests for clarification, both from the Treasury rules and from the Attorney General regarding that exact issue. And we're joining those, so we'll have some direction. And my suspicion is going to be, or my suspicion is, if the answer is going to be the same as it always is, if you can provide us verifiable data that whatever you are improving is directly related to your advertising efforts for tourism, then it'll be justifiable. But it's going to have to be hard data. I suspect that's where they're headed, but that's percolating through. So yes, we'll keep pushing on that issue.
Yeah, let me ask admin to y'all, our federal lobbyists and our state lobbyists, are they plugged into this yet? Or will they be, or how can we use them to?
I think to the degree they have the ability and capability to be, they are. I don't think it's, I don't think it's either of them's greatest focus, but I know that we, our state lobbyist has helped us on the different projects we submitted.
When we took our last trip to Washington, we met with Senator Nelson. And he specifically addressed the fact that he has been in direct contact with Attorney General Holder, urging him to move this process along and get the money to the impacted states and the impacted counties. So our lobbyists in Washington facilitated that meeting with him and he is committed to helping the Panhandle counties get their money.
It seems to me that with all the counties involved, and a lot of them rural counties, a lot of them small counties, that between, you know, between a coalition of people, that we could go to the state and ask the state to set up some kind of, you know, money account where these counties could draw against and then it would be paid back and let them have the state take the risk rather than the small counties. Because the state's probably going to end up with some money. You know, you can believe that. So my thinking is, you know, we're all in the same boat, kind of. So why can't we all go to the state as a coalition of counties and say, you know, we're going to need some upfront money. Otherwise, we're going to be, you know, it's really going to hurt our economy. And I'm sure Waculla and all these other small counties, the same, go to the state and say, look, we want a fund set up that we can upfront these costs.
And like a bank, like a loan?
Something like that, that, you know, that, and then when the money comes in, you know, the state is paid back and not us.
You want me to bring that up next week?
Please do, yes, if you would. Yeah, I think.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Because apparently that's one of the.
That's one of the big issues, yeah.
And if you're a big county and you have a lot of extra funds, which I don't know if that's the case anywhere.
I don't think any of them have.
But, you know, you can hire a Top Gun.
And send that one in there.
End up with.
Anything else?
Well, once again, thank you very much for listening to us and considering. And if I could try to summarize where we are, we're going to be looking at the possibility of TDC funding, looking for an Attorney General's opinion. We're going to be.
Well, I'm not sure we'll go that far because sometimes you get an answer you don't want. So we're exploring other particular ways of doing that.
And as we go forward with the other counties who are going to be looking for some way to get small county assistance for this upfront expense for implementing the Restore Act projects. Is that everything?
Which next meeting?
We have a meeting next, the 19th of September, I think it is. No, no.
No, no, I was just asking when the next meeting is.
Yeah, 19th. We call that just to recap what happens here today and decide where we're going from there. But we will keep in touch.
I think the consensus is, I might have to speak out of term, but the consensus is that we definitely need to look at it and if we can pull it off, I think we would, we would agree. That kind of.
We might have to get creative.
Yeah.
We'll have to get creative.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, committee.
Mr. Chairman, based on Commissioner Meadows' comments and the fact that Commissioner Commander is going to the consortium meeting, if the board would like, we can draft a resolution for the chairman's signature for her to take. But if something you want to do, we'll take action during our regular meeting. And we'll just have to draft, you have to trust us to draft the resolution.
I think that's a great idea. It's a great idea.
I think that will be a great place to start and at least get it on the table. And I'm sure we can get some momentum from it as that's where the other impacted parties will be as well.
And thank you for that excellent presentation. I heard it twice, but it's still, I still think it's a really good presentation just to kind of orient people very quickly, so.
That it? We will.
That'll orient you.
Yeah, we will. Go ahead. We'll take a short break here till 4 o'clock.